Welcome to APA's first Town Hall on Sharing Emergency Practices on COVID-19. My name is Billy Zadik, Standard and Codes Administrator for APA. Just a couple of housekeeping items before we get started. The Town Hall recording will be posted later this afternoon. You'll also receive a follow-up email in the next couple of days with links to the COVID-19 webpage. All attendees are in listen-only mode. Please type your questions in the chat box and they will be answered in the order they are received. If we run out of time and we still have questions, responses will be sent directly to the person asking the question by one of the panelists. Question answers will also be posted to the website. At this time, it's my pleasure to turn this over to Lander Medlin, who will be your moderator today. Lander, take it away.
Welcome, everyone. The four of us, your panel members, Dawn, Mary, and Norm, appreciate your willingness and interest to join us for this inaugural Town Hall meeting to begin the dialogue on sharing emerging practices on coronavirus and its impact on our institutions, both enterprise-wide and facility-specific. Now, you'll note that we changed, most recently, the title from "Sharing Best Practices" to "Sharing Emerging Practices." So, we did that on purpose. We recognize that we are in uncharted waters and we are all rookies at this. And so, we are hoping and expecting to share what we're doing today and to open a huge dialogue that will continue amongst all of you. Our format today, we're going to provide a brief introduction to set context. We're going to roll out the content with this panel around the following major responsibility areas: institutional policy and response, maintenance service operations, custodial services, grounds and landscaping, utilities, and construction. Now, we want to leave a significant portion of time for Q&amp;A. So, whether we can get to all of them or not, which we won't, we have over 1,000 people on this call. APA is committed to and be responsible for sourcing answers and sending them to all of you and to each individual who's asked them. We're going to conclude with available resources that we have. And always, we want you to know what you -- we want to know what you think and what you need so we can proactively respond to this incredible community of professionals. All right, let's begin. Recognize, we're living in extraordinary times, which will require extraordinary efforts. We are up to the challenge. Right now, more than any time in our history, we must understand what exponential, it's a term for mathematical doubling, means. This term, exponential, and its associated rate and pace of growth and change is quite different with hugely different consequences. It is best illustrated by the following illustration. It's a lily pad on the lily pond. So, let's, yeah, we've got that up now. So, here's your setup question. Let's say on day one, June 1, there is one lily pad on the pond. It's now doubles, that lily pad doubles every day until day 30, June 30, when the pond is full of lily pads. So, I ask, on day 20, what percentage of the pond is covered with lily pads? You can see the answer on this graph. One-tenth of 1 percent. You can't even barely see day 20. So, you might wonder where we are and what day we are with this coronavirus. The United States Statistics, to illustrate this, last night, Thursday, the 19th of March, all 50 states, there were 13,000 cases and 193 deaths. One week earlier, Thursday, the 12th, there were 46 states with cases, 1,500 cases, 17 deaths. Two weeks ago, Thursday, March 5, there were a handful of states with 200 cases and no deaths. That's the power of exponential change. And last night, the NIH Director warned that we're on an exponential curve, one that could place us only about eight days behind Italy. Understand, last night, Italy has 41,000 cases and 3,405 deaths, surpassing China's numbers, and a healthcare capacity crisis. So, we must take on an exponential thinking mindset. We must think differently. We must anticipate this rapid change. We must plan in days, not weeks. Last point I want to make is the practice of social distancing, what I now call physical distancing, because as humans, we're social animals and we need connection and communication and dialogue. We're doing that right now, folks. We're doing it virtually. So, think of it this way, how I behave affects you and how you behave affects me. So, how I behave affects not just your health, but my health, but your health. The recommendation last night is behave as if you have COVID-19. You'll be more careful, more mindful, kinder, and gentler. So, remember, now hopefully you can see why such extreme measures are being taken or required of us by our campus senior institutional officers. Colleges and universities, K-12 schools, preparatory schools must do their part. We have an opportunity as facilities professionals for a voice and we must exercise it. So, let's hear first from Dawn Gooker, Associate Vice President of Facilities at University of Iowa, as we open our first content area, institutional policy and response. Dawn?
Yes, thank you, Lander. And I want to begin by acknowledging that all of our institutions have some form of a critical incident management structure or Emergency Operations Command Center. And many or most, I would suspect, follow the guidelines and structure of the National Institute Management System, or NIMS for short. NIMS is a recommended response structure that was developed after 9/11 to handle any number and variety of incidents. And I have used this NIMS process, as many of you have, on my campus to respond to floods and other such developments. Public Safety has used it for active shooter incidents and so on. So, within that NIMS structure are four sections reporting to an Incident Command Structure or Incident Commander that's planning, operations, logistics, and finance/administration. And these sections are designed to be tailored and scalable to the demands of the incident. And given the nature of COVID-19, facilities management should have a seat on at least the planning, operations, and logistics teams. We have a lot to offer and a lot to contribute to that effort. So, if you don't, you should understand the function of these various NIMS sections and then request a seat at the table based on what you can contribute to the institutional response. And if your institution hasn't formally adopted NIMS, chances are they're following that structure in some related way. So, recognizing on our campus, facilities management's experience and positioning, I was tapped to serve as a Planning Section Leader for our overall institutional campus operations. The institution decided to set up a co-leader for the academic and student side of what we're doing, and then our hospital has its own command structure. And I can tell you, from my experience sitting in this leadership circle under this command structure, that no organization on campus has a broader, deeper, and more integrated understanding of overall campus operations than the folks in our profession. We often don't give ourselves enough credit on how we see the total of our institutions in a clearer way than many who are within the institution. We touch everything. We work with every other campus operational unit, and that gives us a very good position when we're dealing with a crisis like this. Further, and perhaps with the exception of Public Safety, no campus organization has more experience in dealing with a crisis or in a major response, emergency response, than us. And that positions us to add a lot of value to the planning, operations, and logistics efforts. Whether leading or executing strategy, we should be informing, advising, and making recommendations at a minimum. So, if this NIMS structure or a similar structure is in place at your campus, your pathway for informing and/or recommending a course of action should flow first into the Planning Section. And do not let broad campus mandates get in the way of exceptions that make sense. That's what the Planning Section's for, is to take in all of the data, all the information, and try to make the best decisions related to the institutional response. For example, your campus is likely executing a form of campus evacuation in which it wants everyone to leave campus. And we all understand the principles and goals behind that mandate, but there is a strong case to be made that facilities organizations can remain on campus without materially elevating the risk of virus spread. I like how Governor Cuomo framed it. He ordered density reduction. And as our colleague Jim Bogan in Wisconsin put it in an email this morning, "The facilities are not the perceived risk, the people are." So, if we take smart physical distancing measures that Lander was talking about, and we are virtually the only ones in the building, we can accomplish a lot of valuable work and necessary work without elevating the risk of the virus spread. So, let me turn to specifically the University of Iowa. And I'll give a broader view of where we're at, and I'll turn it over to Norm and Mary to report on their institutions. And like Mary and others on the call, at Iowa, we have the added dimension in our efforts in that we are supporting a hospital on our campus. Last week, we sent our students into spring break with a decision to go with online courses for the two weeks following this week's spring break. We told them the residence halls would remain open, as well as the recreation center, libraries, and student union. And over last weekend, and again, related to exponential change and, you know, the development of things happening rapidly, early this week, everything changed. The residence halls are now permanently closed, recreation centers closed, libraries, student union, everything. In fact, in short, we don't want our students coming back, especially after spring break. So, this week, we began migrating our campus community to a work-at-home mode. And to make the case to stay on campus, the work had to line up behind one or more of the following guiding institutional principles: healthcare, clinical enterprise, support of that, support of virtual education, support of our research efforts, support of safety and well-being of students, staff, and faculty, and support of critical business and administrative functions. Yet, those are the cases, those are the needs on which folks who are still on campus are working, are working, the reason they are working. And for those employees who cannot perform their work at home and are not needed on our campus, we still wanted to send them home. We sent them home in pay status and put them into a campus-wide pool of employees to be deployed in other areas needing help. And we'll expect that need to grow as we have reductions in our workforce due to illness and other reasons for employees not being available. In fact, we're modeling a 40% reduction in available workforce based on direction we're getting from our state public health department. Later in the conversation, I'll share more information on how we are working on campus across our various facilities management units. Yesterday, we implemented a campus-wide building lockdown to ensure security of our principally empty buildings and to close traffic to the public. Faculty and staff that continue to work on campus have card access, and we are going to begin using card access data to track building movement, daily occupancies, so that we can narrow our focus on cleaning efforts. Our latest guess of it is that the university is around 10% occupancy today and should be going under 5% as we enter next week. That said, the facilities management organization is probably closer to 80% of us working on campus. Our office staff is down to around 20% now, but we're almost at full working force in the field. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Norm.
Dawn, thank you. Hi, everyone. Norm Young, University of Hartford. We're in a little bit of a different situation here. Most of what Dawn just described is what we're doing. We are using the NIMS protocol as we go through our planning efforts. We are at the table, facilities, that is. We're key to the planning that's going on here. So, for all the reasons Dawn mentioned, we're right at the table, which is a good thing because, as Dawn says, we know virtually everything that's going on on campus. The difference with our campus is we went through the same process of, okay, we're going to be here, everybody's going to be here for a while, and as this thing progresses, we will decide what we're going to do. It changed virtually every day, and we are now in a situation where we've sent virtually everybody home except those that have to be on campus. And that ends up being facilities, public safety, our IT folks, and our food service folks. That's who remain on campus, that's who are allowed to remain on campus. That is all happening this week. So, by the end of the day today, we are going to have everybody off-campus except for those groups that I just talked about. We have not decided to close for the semester. We have, we're on extended break right now. We expect to go online, as most of you, I assume, are, within a week, and then we are going to decide what we're going to do. But for right now, our students are thinking they're coming back to campus, and that is what we're planning for. So, we'll see where that goes. As for our staff, we are probably about 80% right now as well. We will not be next week. We're going to change that, and something slightly different than what Dawn said, we are not going to be performing work that is not absolutely necessary. Really, that's for two reasons. The state of Connecticut is pushing us very hard to limit the amount of people we have coming to campus, and that includes our staff. The other thing is, we have a financial concern, and I would assume all of the schools do. So, our financial folks are a little concerned about where this is going to end up. So, we're trying not to spend money that we do not need to spend right now. So, we've suspended quite a few things on campus. There are some things that are going on, which we'll talk a little bit more a little later in this program, but for the most part, we've just backed away from that. Our biggest concern is obviously going to be keeping places clean and keeping people healthy. But that's where we are. It's changing every day, so I know there'll be another call next week on APA. I'm sure there'll be a lot of differences, but that's where the university is at this point. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mary.
Hi, Mary Voss-Fitch here at the University of Kentucky. So, I think Dawn and Norm have really laid out the path here that we're all challenged with right now. At the University of Kentucky, when this started happening, we stood up our Emergency Operations Center. We do follow the NIMS system, and we established the four primary principles that we want to follow. The first one being the health and safety of our Wildcat community, sustain our ongoing operations, timely factual communications that have to happen, how do we support each other? Those were the things that were really foremost for us, but also, at that time, we were saying that finances come second. So, those principles have kind of been guiding us, but as you can imagine, over the course of the last several weeks, things have changed a lot here. We have closed our campus in regard to the fact that our students are all moving out next week. We're evaluating those that have nowhere to go and are going to provide housing facilities for a certain group of those individuals, and they have to apply for those waivers. Our staff and facilities are all working. That is being supported by those that can work remotely from home. So, asking that those folks manage that. We have healthcare issues. We do have a Level 1 Trauma Center on our campus. We have over 400 healthcare workers that need childcare, so that's an ongoing issue for us also. And much like where many of you are also, our communities are shut down. So, childcare centers are closing today at 5:00. Where do you put your kids? Big thing, believe it or not, in Kentucky, the bingo parlors had to shut down. So, you know, and I'm not trying to make light of that, but that'll just show you kind of the scope of all the things that are going on here. Our healthcare is of primary importance to us. We are shutting down access to our healthcare facilities. Folks are being screened if they want to enter our hospital clinic areas right now. So, all the other things that Norm and Dawn talked about are pretty much going on here at Kentucky as well. I'll turn it back to Lander.
Mary, we're going to move to the Maintenance Service Operations, but let me tell folks that if you cannot hear, your speakers are probably muted, and we're trying to let you know that. So, make sure that you unmute your speakers on your computer. You can certainly call in via the phone number and utilize that in the GoToWebinar because there are not that many slides. It's not a big deal on that end. And we will certainly send all those out. And we are collecting questions as we go on, so please keep asking your questions, keep letting us know. But we will try to send each of you a note about if you're not hearing something, it's because they're muted. So, our team, Billy and Suzanne, could you do that? So, let's move on to Maintenance Service Operations. Mary, let's talk about what's happening in this specific realm and what you're seeing as emerging practices.
All right, thank you, Lander. So, with our maintenance operations here at Kentucky, we manage about 20 million square feet, but I think the same applies for any institution regardless of the size. So, one of our primary concerns, even though our buildings are being shut down, is how do we also protect our employees? So, we have started to move towards different shifts with our employees right now. Let me give you an example of what that is. We do not want all of our HVAC techs working the same shift. And part of our reason for that is if one of them were to get ill, we don't want that illness to spread to the others and then leave us shorthanded and at risk, if you will, by not having those specific trades. So, I think that was some unique thinking for us because historically, we are, you know, a 7 to 4 o'clock type of shift environment here. Our buildings are being still maintained at the level that they were, and of course, you know, we all think about how great it would be to have access to our buildings to do whatever we want to do in them without any of the building occupants. So, that also is driving some of the things that we're doing and expediting some of the projects that we normally would have done over the summer months. We're moving forward with some of those ahead of schedule. And we hear from our folks that, you know, they're concerned, so we're practicing social distancing. And that's a little complicated when you've got two folks working in an area, but we're doing the best that we can in that regard. We've heard some from some folks that they don't think this is fair. Well, it's not fair, but it's what we do and it's how we're going to manage our campus. So, we're not allowing two people in a vehicle anymore because that's not the distance that we want to maintain. That means some people are going to be walking a little bit. It might be that we're deploying tools to a certain area and then letting folks access those once they get to that area. So, those are some of the smaller things that we're doing that are making a big impact on our campus right now. So, I will turn it over to Norm from there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mary. One thing I wanted to mention in the last segment was, we are paying all of our folks on campus. Everyone is under a normal payroll. That may be a question that comes up. I thought I'd answer that now. But as I mentioned earlier, because we made the decision to virtually empty the campus starting next week, that includes many of my staff. So, we made the decision to curtail maintenance operations, even though those of us who are managers would love to have the time to do this stuff now, we decided not to do that. So, from the maintenance perspective, we're going to do the regulatory things we have to do. You know, there's grease traps that have to be attended to. Our HVAC folks will be coming in on a staggered basis to go to the mechanical rooms to make sure that things are operating properly, whatever isn't on a remote control. But beyond that, our typical trades are going to be on-call. We have about 80 students on campus right now, 85, I believe, for the same reasons you heard earlier. They really have no place to go. Most of them are international students. So, we know we're going to have some service calls, but we're going to do that as if we were in a winter shutdown mode or just a time when it would be maybe a holiday or a long weekend, that we're going to have people on-call. That's good and bad. I think that eliminates the potential of anybody getting sick. People are home, we're going to stagger them coming in and out, so it's not always the same person coming in to do the checking of the things that we have to. But it keeps us pretty separate. The negative is, we're not getting some things done that I would like to, but that's our decision and that's how we're moving. So, I'll turn that over to Dawn now.
Thanks, Norman. I think how Mary outlined what they're doing at Kentucky mirrors a lot what we're doing here at Iowa and some of what Norm covered as well. I will just add that we are managers, supervisors, directors, associate directors are in a work-at-home mode to the extent that makes sense. So, where they're coming in for a short visit and then going back at home. So, even if they're on campus for an hour or two, they do what they have to do with their crews, and then they're back home for six hours, that's still helping the social distancing, the physical distancing goal that we're trying to put into place. As we look to the next level of planning, we have to, we realize that as cases start to grow and escalate, we're going to want to know where our maintenance folks, where our ITS folks, where whatever service contracts that we allow into the building. We want to know where they're at. So, we're going to have to get more disciplined in tracking building movement of our own maintenance workforce, ITS and others, so that if anyone on those crews were to come down with a virus, we would know where we have to go and disinfect, sterilize, and clean. So, that's what I would add to Norm and Mary. So, I'll send it back to you, Lander.
So, that's a really good point, Dawn, and I think you've covered, all three of you have covered a number of the questions that are coming in on, in this topical area. We are going to continue to take as many questions as you, and we're going to go to a Q&amp;A session in a bit. Let's move now to custodial services, and I'm going to start with Norm.
Ah, custodial services, the savior of the institution. This has been a, this has been one of the hardest things to deal with for us, simply because things have changed so much. It's difficult for us to get a handle on how many students are here, how many students are actually coming back to campus that think they can stay for a while and then might end up being here and not be able to get out or not be able to go back home. We've got a lot of this going on now, so there's uncertainty about how many people are on campus, and there's a little uncertainty about how we're going to utilize our lecture spaces, I should say, our labs going forward. But because we're online, we're going to have to utilize some of those so the professors can come in and do their, do a video snap of what's going on in a chemistry lab, for instance, so it could be played online. So, we're adjusting. So, this week, we've been on break, as I mentioned. We've had our full custodial staff in. It's virtually the only area, I believe, on campus that has been completely fully staffed this whole week. Next week, we're going to a limited set of shifts, which are going to be very different than the way we have been operating. We've been operating with first, second, and third shift. Third shift is where the bulk of our work got done. We're going to eliminate that third shift. Some of our folks are going to be able to move on to what we're now calling three short shifts during the day. It's basically a morning, a PM, and an evening. And we're going to be hitting the areas that we now believe are going to be occupied. Then there's four or five of them on campus that are going to be pretty critical, but then there's also the residence halls. But what we realize with custodial is, this is going to shift. Things are going to change next week, and we're just going to have to move forward. So, we've been talking with our staffs. We have a unionized environment in custodial. We are not unionized anywhere else, but that has not stopped us from working with the union and working with our custodial supervisors and custodians themselves who have stepped up to the plate. It's been really good. They have, they're willing to do what they need to do. We have, as everybody else does, staff issues with people who may have been working on the third shift and who may have a second job or may have daycare responsibilities. And I would say, and a suggestion I would give everybody, is to just try and be as accommodating as possible with folks that may be older or may have these kind of issues. I'm sure you're seeing those things now. And the other thing I would say in custodial, one of the things we found is it's very important to communicate, communicate, communicate. Let everybody know what's going on. Let them know what the institution is doing, and you've got to do that multiple times a day. That's really true with your whole staff, but we found the custodians find themselves in the firing line, and it's really, really important. So, with that, I'll stop talking, and I'm going to turn it over to Dawn.
Yeah, thanks, Norm. And I'll describe where we are currently with this building locking protocol that we're now into. It allows us to go into buildings that are completely vacated and do a top-to-bottom cleaning, walk away from it and keep that building secure. That said, many of our buildings have minimal occupancy in them. And what we're, again, we would like to go in there while the buildings are principally empty and clean as much as we can. So, again, we're going to use card access data. The classroom scheduling for our faculty also have to get into the classroom to prepare and deliver their online courses. But what we're trying to do is use some data captures and scheduling to know, to the degree we can, where movement is going in the building. And so, to narrow down the scope of what we need to keep our eye on and what we can clean and walk away from, we're going mapping that movement. So, we are probably getting to a point where we're going to have just a couple designated restrooms in the building and all the others closed. We're going to have off-limits in areas that, you know, we're seeing no movement or so on. But currently, you know, faculty members swipe a card to get in the building. We know where their office or lab is. We could cross over to the schedule for them to use the classroom to prepare and, to a pretty large extent, narrow down path of travel so that, again, if anybody falls ill, we know where we can focus our efforts in and go in and clean up behind. So, we're working to ramp that up as we speak. We had our first case of an employee We had our first case of an employee and a student testing positive for the virus on our campus yesterday. And in the case of the employee, the employee works in a rather large office area that's supporting a critical hospital function, it's a call center, actually, that we were asked to come in and do a certain scope of cleaning. Well, we were in this discussion already on our campuses, what is the right cleaning protocol? How much time elapses after which you don't have to worry about? And we're still working through that. This panel is reluctant to share with you specific protocols or targets because all of our healthcare professionals are trying to figure and get their arms around this virus. But, we are starting to see consensus among our medical faculty and our public health faculty who are helping us with this on how long is long enough that the virus would no longer live on a cleaning surface. So, as we see this ramping up exponentially next week, we're going to have to make decisions on, within that timeframe, going in there, well, not decisions, but where we're standing right now is to go in within that timeframe and clean that office space and path of travel right away. And anything that's older than that timeframe, mainly the 90% of, or 95% of the folks who are now working at home may test positive, their space can wait if they're outside that critical time period, and then we'll put that into a scheduling mode. But, we're quickly going to find ourselves unable, either with our service provider or ourselves, to keep up with what we see is going to be an exponential demand for cleaning. The last thing I'll mention is that, again, we are modeling a 40% reduction in our custodial staff due to them coming down with the virus, being quarantined or having childcare issues. And with this pool of employees that we were talking about earlier, that I was talking about earlier, we're going to draw from that pool, folks that can actually perform custodial services. And just an initial example is our performing arts center put 10 custodians into that pool this week, and we're drawing them out today to deploy them on our custodial effort. So, we're actually trying to build up our custodial organizational capacity. So, Mary?
Thanks, Don. So, I think I can, we're pretty much doing everything that Don and Norm were both talking about also. I think it's really important to keep those lines of communication open with our custodians. I meet with those folks, you know, throughout the year. And our motto for what we do in facilities is, we talk about what somebody does, the first thing we say in facilities is that we help graduate students. So, that really brings them into the family of the university and its culture. But, they're challenged and they're stressed out, and so, we're constantly having to share with them and remind them of the value that they bring to the university. We are still fully staffed. We're intending to stay that way with those, with the exception of those that would have some of the issues where they need to be at home. But, our dining services have shut down here essentially, and so, we're looking at bringing some of those employees into facilities as well on an interim basis to help us with some of the things that we're doing. Our first goal was to do more intensified cleaning, so the approach is to be cleaning for health. And if you clean for health, the appearance of the facility will follow that. So, what does that mean? It means those things like wiping down the doorknobs and sanitizing them and any of the touch surfaces that you have in an area. The other thing that, a couple of other things that we've done, of course, and I'm sure all of you have done it as well, is we're putting signage in all the restrooms to remind people to wash their hands. We're lucky enough that instead of having to sing "Happy Birthday," we can sing our fight song and get that 20 seconds of hand washing in. The other thing that we've done is we've created desk cards for every office and lab on the campus to ask for help from those occupants, that they can wipe down their surfaces, wipe down their computers, wipe down their phones also. So, that's bringing the rest of the community into this effort and trying to, everybody work together to try to get through all of this. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to Lander.
Great, Mary. That's excellent. And let's round out our critical operations and maintenance side of this with a focus on grounds and landscaping. Norm, I want to start with you in this area because it is a critical area as well.
Yes, so, following along with the other trades, however, we are going to limit grounds activities as much as we can for the next couple of weeks, really two weeks. We need grounds crew here. There are certain things that they have to perform from a regulatory perspective. There's certainly going to be trash that will accumulate, that will need to be dealt with. That's a typical grounds function. From a landscaping perspective, we're not going to be doing too much, although the team would love to be working on grounds right now and getting some areas repaired from winter damage. But, we're going to hold back on that until April 1 because that is really when our grass cutting season starts. So, we're going to have to bring in some folks at that point to work through that. So, our plan is to ramp down for the next two weeks and to ramp back up April 1, when in the Northeast is when we need to start thinking about it. You know, an example is we've got some snow coming in Monday. We don't think it's going to be a lot of snow, but it would be something where we might have some contracted services come in to help us clear our parking lots if needed, and our grounds crew would be doing sidewalks and stairs. In this case, we're not going to clear any parking lots. We're just going to make sure roads and sidewalks and areas that we know are going to be occupied are taken care of. So, we're really, to go with the theme I've been talking about, limiting the things we do, limiting the amount of money we spend for now, and limiting the amount of people we bring onto campus. That all changes when the grass starts growing, though, because we've got to deal with that. I'll turn it over to Mary.
All right. Well, our grounds and landscaping crews are operating as normal. Again, we're trying to practice that social distancing that's going on and still dealing, again, with any staff shortages. Just like in custodial services, there might be limited supplies that we have to manage also. So, those are pretty much the same things that everybody else is working on as far as grounds and landscaping goes. And, of course, you know, weather is always going to impact what we're doing, just like Norm said. So, with that, not much more to say. I'll pass that back to Don. Hello?
Don?
Don?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. I was on mute, so thank you, Mary, and I beg everybody's pardon. Yeah, similar to what you're doing at Kentucky, we're following that here at Iowa. We have 50 to 60 individuals in our grounds department, spread over 1,900 acres. So, it's all about how we lower the density, again, back to Governor Cuomo's term, and distributing our workforce across a pretty large campus. In fact, one of the questions we have to ask with this pool of labor available, which, some of which are our students, is there other work we want done and still maintain that separation? We have a river here, there's a riverbank cleanup, there's painting of handrails and bollards and all kinds of things that we could get into. We're just not there at that decision point, but we are not reducing staff on campus because we like the fact that we have the eyes on the campus. They will see things. This is a very vacant, desolate-looking campus right now, and it's, there's some comfort in having folks spread around the campus, keeping an eye on things. So, I'll send it back to you, Lander.
Okay, that's great. So, that rounds out the core of operations and maintenance side of the house. We want to look at utilities now, because utilities are, I'm getting a number of questions from people that are talking about building night setbacks, relationship with reducing energy, using this time to get energy savings and low occupancy. And I think we've got some really good comments on the part of our panel around what they're doing with respect to utilities and should be able to answer a full complement of these questions that I'm seeing. Mary, you want to start out our comments on utilities?
Sure, thanks, Lander. So, what we're doing here at Kentucky is we've had to put work management plans together for each of the units on campus, actually, and we've done so with facilities also. And with our utilities division here, they have set forth a work plan that addresses our heating and cooling folks, our electrical, our energy conservation and our high voltage folks. And in regards to utilities conservation, we also are planning to be aggressive on our utilities, our energy conservation, if you will. First of all, it's the right thing to do, right? We're all challenged with doing that every day, but all of our campuses are going to experience some kind of financial burden from all of this that is happening also. So, we want to be aggressive with our energy conservation, and we're going to be doing that, looking at it building by building. We know there are going to be some buildings that have occupants in them, no matter how hard we try to shut down a building completely. But, those folks are going to have to understand some of the challenges that we're having, but we're also, depending on what that need is, are going to try to be understanding in regard to that also. Our staffing covers all the shifts that I talked about, pretty much when we were talking about maintenance also, that we're really looking at who is working in each of those shifts and each of those areas of utility, so that we don't spread ourselves too thin in one area and not be able to cover in need of a reduced level of staffing for illness or something like that. But, as we shut down our buildings also, we know that there are other issues that we're going to have to look at. So, that might be something like water and water quality in a building, if a building's been shut down for a long period of time. So, we're fortunate in that we've got great support from our local utility providers. We've got a good team working in utilities, but again, I can't stress enough for your folks to be wide awake and know to take care of themselves as well. So, I will pass it over to Don right now.
Thanks, Mary. In addition to what Mary said, I will add that we have, our steam generation on this campus is a critical utility. It's the lifeblood of a lot of processes and research and particularly healthcare. We do also produce power, and we have our own water plant on this campus. And so, probably the most strictest controls we have on campus is entry into those facilities. We have some very limited staffing with some very specialized expertise, and if we were to have a virus spread across our boiler operators, we could bring us to our knees, or it's only a handful of boiler operators. So, we won't let any contractors, any service providers, anybody who doesn't need to operate that plant in that plant, just for that added safety, security, that we don't lose that vital service. So, Norm, over to you.
Sure. So, we have a decentralized plant here, which I highly recommend, frankly, for a mid-sized campus. So, I've got, our HVAC technicians will be doing rounds in the various mechanical rooms, I think, as I mentioned earlier. But, we are getting very aggressive with trying to save some energy here. We're trying to close as many buildings as possible, and I think we're being pretty successful. We're making saving energy one of our primary goals here. So, you know, it's a shoulder system of season in the spring, so we're not going to save as much as we might in the middle of the winter, but there's still savings to be had. So, there are a few units that do need to be on campus. They're actually moving their operation into buildings that we're keeping open. And I think I mentioned, there may be three or four that we're keeping open. So, very aggressive on that. I think it makes a lot of sense. We're going into what would be called unoccupied mode, with temperatures will be dropped, and we're just going to keep up with that. And as I think the other, Mary and Don both said, you do need to have some presence on campus for these systems, just to make sure that they're operating properly. But, that's what we are doing. I'll turn it over to Lander.
Great, that's excellent on utilities, and I think that did answer a number of the questions that were coming in regarding the utility side of the house. So, we want to round out the content areas with construction. Let's take a look at the construction side, which is getting very complicated, and NAPA has a survey tool out for construction owners that I'll share with you later with a slide, and you can go and provide some information so we can get our hands around construction projects and what you're doing. But, I think that, Don, you have some good examples, and we'll go to Norm and Mary around what you're doing with respect to construction, construction projects, what you're keeping on, not, et cetera.
Okay, thanks, Lander. And I'll start with the design end of it. And whether it's the architectural engineering community or the contracting community, what we're hearing is they want to stay active and busy to the extent they can. So, our design consultants, for the most part, have work-at-home practices in place, and projects are moving forward, albeit a little bit more awkward in these times than they would normally. Our design project managers have all been set up to work at home, so we do not have design project managers working on campus. We're trying to move those projects forward as best we can, given the challenges of remote work. Occasionally, we anticipate that they'll have to come on the campus for critical meetings, must-have meetings, must-have in-person meetings or exchange of documents or whatever. But, by and large, that effort continues at a slower throughput at a work-at-home arrangement. On the construction side, we have responsibility for the hospital as well as the campus and utilities and so on. We have 140 projects that are currently in construction, and each one of them has to be analyzed on its own merits of whether it should continue on or not. And so, we are working into this weekend to try to sort that out. In general, what we're hearing is that there's a preference to keep construction activities going on for economic reasons, and contractors are particularly vulnerable to cash flow interruptions. So, we are going to go through and determine what's in the best interest of the university, what risks do we not want to take. So, I just mentioned earlier about our practices at our utility plant. We have terminated, or I should say suspended, every contract that was going on inside our steam and power plant and our water plant. The hospital is going through their, with us, their listed projects to make decisions on what they think are fine to go forward and what are not. And then, we're going to do that on the campus side. So, we have a lot of outdoor work that, as long as the contractors, we, in our contracting community, they do exercise good safe practices and distancing. They want to continue on a roof replacement or a utility distribution project or whatever thing like that. It actually might be an ideal time for that work to get done on our campus. And then, if they're inside doing a renovation project, most of our renovation projects are actually barrier-ed off from our occupied space. And again, we would probably allow a majority of those to go forward. But, it's when you have the intersection of construction activities with either our population or in a few cases, we have two different contracts occupying a similar space, and they want the university to assure that each contractor's do the responsible thing. That becomes a more challenging situation. So, every one of these, and they range from just a few thousand dollars all the way up to, you know, 60, 70 million dollars currently, are, we're working through and making a decision on where we want to be. When the university suspends a contract, some contract language will require us to not only give a time extension, but to give compensation for demobilization and then re-mobilization. So, our approach is to first let the contractors come to us. You know, we have sent out an invitation for the contractors to approach us if they would like a time extension, a suspension of work and all that. We will listen to their pleas on that or their case on that. So, that's, it's motion, but today, nothing except what's been done in our utilities plant and some projects at the hospital have been suspended. The majority of our projects are continuing into next week as we work through our project list. So, with that, I will turn it over to Norm.
All right, thank you, Don. So, I put together a list of all of our projects for our command structure, which we call a situation management team. Now, I'm a little bit of a smaller campus, so I don't have 140 projects, but I have a number of them. And we, as a team, actually decided which ones we were going to go forward with and which ones we were not. Generally, the picture is if it was ongoing and we had already been under contract and materials had been ordered, things like that, even smaller projects, we are going forward. So, we will have contractors on campus now for the foreseeable future. There are about half of the projects that I put on my list that we are curtailing, though. There are things that we hadn't contracted for yet, we're thinking about doing, things that we know we need but are not actually critical for us to go forward. And a lot of that had to do with financing, again. You know, that's a big issue. We're a tuition-driven institution, and our financial folks are very concerned about where this is going to go. So, if it wasn't absolutely needed or wasn't already under contract, we stopped. One thing I will mention that I'm seeing here and I'm starting to get concerned about is our local municipalities are shutting down some of the services such as licensing and inspections and our planning and zoning groups. And while we haven't been told that we are not going to be serviced, we're starting to get to a critical point in a couple of projects that may actually hold them up. And I'm not sure if you're seeing that in other parts of the country, but it's a concern, and that may shut down a project that has nothing to do with our decisions. So, we're watching that as we go. So that, we're watching that as we go forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mary.
Thanks, Norm. So we started when we were evaluating our construction projects, really with those that were happening at our healthcare enterprise. And the leadership at our hospitals really put together a protocol that they are requiring of all of our contractors that are working in that particular environment. In addition to that, we, our contractors, many of them have already submitted protocols to us on how they are going to work and how they are going to manage through this. So we have collected all of those. We have developed our own list of protocols that we are getting ready, probably this afternoon actually, to send out to our contractors on all the guidelines they have to follow if they're going to be working on campus. We're fortunate that we have good contractors, and I'm, as I'm sure many of you do also, that they are our partners. And we work really well together with them. They help us, we help them, and we anticipate that that will continue. But it's a tough time for them. We've limited their access. We're not allowing them in public areas. They're not going to be in our dining facilities, or asking them to bring their lunch or go off-site. We are asking them to stay in the contained spaces of their respective projects. So it's been a little tough on them, but they've really stepped up and are helping us out in that regard. And we have hundreds of projects also happening on our campus. So this is also going to be a little bit more management that has to happen on our part also. So most of our project managers have the opportunity to work part of the time remotely, but you know, we also have time-sensitive projects that have to happen for us to be ready when we all come back in the fall, right? So in addition to that, we also have time-sensitive projects that have to happen in healthcare. So that relationship with our business partners in the construction industry are vitally important to us. With that, I'll turn it back to Lander.
Okay. Excellent. So what we want to do now, we've provided you some pretty darn good content. We want to start into questions, and we have an amazing number of questions. I've been capturing, and what I want to do is go to our panel with some of these. First, some of them are related to our custodial staff, maintenance and operations, trade staff. Are they being screened daily, provided N95 masks? Let's look at that first, and then what custodial training are we providing for the folks to be dealing with the virus? Norm, I'm going to jump you on that, since you had talked on custodial services first. Maybe we could look at that. Training that you're doing, specific to the virus? Are you screening them daily like you see at TSA, you know, et cetera, or any entry to federal buildings or et cetera? And then N95 net masks?
Okay. First of all, we are following OSHA and CDC rules, or guidelines, I will say. So they, it pretty much spells out what you need to do. For instance, if you look at the OSHA website, you'll find an area on household cleaning that generally describes what you do in a residence hall. I'm not going to get into the details. I would ask everybody to look at those things. But generally, gloves, Tyvek suit, if you really want to have one, is what's recommended. The N95 masks are really for first responders, and we don't consider ourselves first responders. Our public safety officers are getting fitted for those, so we are not providing those to staff. We are providing masks if they want, but everything we've seen has suggested that those are not particularly needed when you're going in to do a cleaning operation. And of course, we have protocols about how long we wait before we go in. Don mentioned this a little bit. The recommendations are all over the place. We're just being as cautious as we can in that regard. But there is some language around those things as well within CDC and OSHA. We are not screening anybody either. We're just paying attention to our staff and seeing what's going on, and we'll see what goes on for the next week. But that's how we're handling it.
Okay. That's excellent. And I would add to that, that Epa has a website with CDC guidelines, et cetera. We are updating those daily, and the local state health guidelines are really, really important as well, depending on your state and your geographic location. So those protocols, we may not necessarily have those, but we will have CDC and WHO. So that's excellent. Others, Dawn or Mary, do you want to chime in on that? Are you good?
I'm good.
The only thing that I will add, again, there's this time lapse that matters. So if the infection is relatively fresh, that's one approach to cleaning. If it's past that time period, then we're cleaning for almost psychology of the occupants, and that's a lower bar. We're being assured of that from our public health officials, that once you've passed it, whatever everybody agrees on is that time period, then it's sort of routine cleaning. We aren't testing our employees at this time yet, but we could see getting to that point.
Okay.
And Lander, just one thing I'll add as well. The, getting into various areas, we are paying attention to our local health officials. I think Don broke that, brought that up, and you did as well. We have a health official that sits on our situation management team and actually advises us, and this is a state person. So we're getting some guidance there, and I would recommend that if you're not getting guidance from either a public health official or perhaps someone that's part of your institution, which I know some schools do, you should be. That's a really good guidepost for how to deal with your cleaning operation.
And Lander, if I could add one more thing.
Go ahead, Mary.
We are screening at our hospital, so if you don't have a hospital credential, you will be screened coming into the area. And that certainly could apply to some of our contractors or our subcontractors.
That's excellent. And I would recommend that folks from the Smithsonian sent in a resource on disinfecting surfaces, keyboard spaces, knobs, railings, all that kind of stuff. They really did a good job on it. It was posted yesterday, I believe, onto our COVID-19 website, and we are welcoming any folks' practices that they are utilizing that we can post to share with others. So please keep those coming, not just questions, but send us those materials, and I'll give you a location to send those at the end when we close out. But those disinfecting services, et cetera, there's some good practices, and we've already got some on the site. So I'm going to move to some more people stuff that we're getting, panel. And it's around, when you're closed, does that kick in emergency pay? And you know, so let's just, let's do a quick answer on that one, then I have a couple others that are related to these people questions, all right?
Lander, let me start. Many of us will not use the term "our campus is closed." It continues to operate, and there's online education going on, there's research and so on and so forth. So we don't like the term "closed," but I think in the spirit of the question, it's not emergency pay. In fact, in our case, we have employees working at home in full pay status, and we have other employees who can't work at home and aren't needed on campus in this pool of employees to be redeployed, who continue to be on pay status.
So if I get that right, Dawn, that's a really important point, because Epa's not closed either. We're working remotely. I would suggest that you're working different. It's what you're doing. You're working differently, and you need to reinforce that and communicate, communicate, communicate with folks that that's what you're doing. You are still open for business. It's really important, because your campus needs to have folks saying that same thing. We're not closed, we're just working differently and working remotely. Great point. Any of the other panelists want to chime in on that?
I would just say that we're in the same situation as Iowa.
Okay. Good. Norm?
And yeah, pretty much the same situation. We've had some pushback from some of our staff, that they have to be here and others are home, and they're getting paid. But we've worked through that through communication, and everybody understands they're in an essential situation here. They're getting paid, and we are in, campus is not closed, as Don alluded to, we are open as well. But that takes a lot of communication, so you just have to talk your folks through it.
Excellent. So you mentioned the word "essential," and that's come up several times. People want to know two things. They want us to help define essential services. That's different than essential employees. So maybe we can take a stab at, first, what are we considering essential services? And I believe you touched on some of those. Dawn, you want to field that one first, and then I'll go to Norm and Mary.
Yeah, we are very sensitive to the language that's being used. So it's the employees that we believe that it's essential for them to be on campus, rather than essential employees. It's essential for them to be on campus to support those five guiding principles that I outlined earlier about the support of the healthcare enterprise, virtual education, research, safety, well-being, and critical business administrative functions.
Great. Norm?
Yeah, and this is Norm. We've been struggling a lot with that. We've really tried to keep it simple. Offices that can work from home or working from home, they may be considered essential, but they are an essential service. So for instance, HR, all working from home, but they're an essential service. We've pretty much been focusing on people who needed to be on campus, and we made it very simple. It's all facility services, all public safety services, all food services, and all IT services. And there is a healthcare aspect of that, too. We have health services here. All of them are required to provide those services in some way on campus. We, as groups in the various areas, have defined what that is, of course, based on approval by our situation management team. But you know, that's a struggle, I think, that a lot of institutions have, in that they haven't really done a good job of defining essential services. We hope to come out of this with, and essential employees, by the way, too. We hope to come out of this with a much better feel for that, which would be one of the good things that happens here.
Yes. That's great. We're always looking for some silver linings here. Mary, I think you've got some really good things you're doing at UK on this.
Yeah, we're pretty much doing all the same thing that everybody else is doing, though. You know, it's tough, because, you know, as I mentioned when we first started this afternoon, is our employees think it's not fair, but yet they understand the mission also and their role in achieving that. So you know, if they're going to be working here a month when nobody else is present on campus, they probably think they'll want another month off also. But you know, that's the nature of it, and we have really good people. We all do in our industry. I think we are really great family environments in our facilities organizations, and we always step up to a crisis, don't we? So, you know, and the other thing is, is what we're talking about today likely will change come Monday or Tuesday of next week. That's how fluid this whole situation is.
That's a great point, Mary. Very important that people understand that whatever you put in place needs to be flexible, fluid, adapt and readapt. Rethink it. You're not planning out weeks, you're planning out days, and those weeks are actually measured in days, given the exponential rate and pace of change in all of this. Okay, so there's some interesting questions. If people are afraid of coming to work, how are you dealing with them? I'll go to Mary. Can I come back to you, Mary? People are afraid of coming to work.
Yeah, sure. You know, I think some of that is normal. I think, you know, when we're following the CDC guidelines of trying to embrace that social distancing, if you will, that, you know, those guidelines are important. They were put in place for a reason. And you know, we just have to keep talking with our folks, and that's one of the biggest challenges through this whole thing, is to have good and consistent communications. Because once they start drifting off into smaller groups and start coming up with ideas that they're formulating themselves without the facts, it becomes really, really very complicated to try to quiet things down a bit, I guess. You know, and, you know, folks have vacation time also, so I think on a case-by-case basis, if folks want to not be here and use their vacation time, I think it's totally fine to approve that. But there's this, as Norm was saying, and Dawn also, there's this idea that folks are home and they're not working. Well, they are, you know, and some of our folks don't have the luxury of being able to do the work that they do at home.
Lander, I'll add, I almost had the opposite concern, that our employees aren't worried enough. I still am telling people to separate, not to be so close to one another, you know, make sure you're constantly washing your hands. Now, they'll quickly flip the other way, where it'll get to the point where they are afraid of going out of the house. But interestingly enough, in this first week or so, it's been the opposite, trying to drive home the message that we have to separate people. So you know, sort of related to that, we didn't cover it, but we're under, no more than 10 people can gather together for anything on campus. And we, actually, we say, we don't want any gatherings, but if you must, you must limit to that. And so we are, having 10 people meet in a small conference room is different than 10 people in a very large conference room. So it's that sort of mindset we're trying to get to, is that we want you to, if you have to get together, you're going to be in a space where you have to have at least a chair in between you and the next person, at least six feet, if not eight, and so on and so forth. So that's one comment to this topic. The other one is, all of us, I think, know people who work in the medical profession, and it's all a matter of perspective. And so as unsafe that I might feel, I look across at our hospital and I just have nothing but admiration for the folks that are on the front line. And so it's all perspective. If they could go in and deal with the frontline virus that we're dealing with, I'd need to be here to support that.
Yeah, there's an interesting thing that happened last night. I saw that with the medical community, doctors and nurses, and they had little signs that they had up, and it was sort of a panoply of these signs, and every one of them said, "I stayed at work for you, so you should stay at home for us." And it was really a powerful message on the part of the doctors and nurses, and really thinking about how we live in the now and plan in days, not weeks, and how we think about getting through this by helping each other. I think your comments are really well-taken about social and physical distancing. Any other comments that you folks, because we had a lot of comments on the physical distancing and social distancing for the labor force, for the frontline employee. And Mary, you mentioned it in, when you made a comment about vehicles, two people not allowed in a vehicle anymore, no close working, that, so could you take a stab at a few more comments around the social and physical distancing? Mary, I'll go to you.
Well, pretty much what I said before, but we've had certain examples of that happening. You know, the golf cart that our grounds folks are in, a couple of them in a grounds cart, you know? And what's interesting about all of this is we're hearing it from other folks on campus. So they will, you know, I'll get an email, "I just saw a couple of grounds people," or "I just saw a couple of tradespeople or custodians, or whoever it may be, that were not practicing social distancing." So the campus is watching, and I think the campuses is, you know, it's, certainly some of it is for their own safety, but they're also looking out for the well-being of our employees also. So I think that's really important. And you know, there's a lot of things that our folks can do where they don't have to be standing right next to each other, but that doesn't mean that we can ignore the protocol that we need to have and not have somebody off in a building where we don't know where they are and suffer some kind of an event that we wouldn't be able to respond because we didn't know. So it's really kind of on a case-by-case basis that we're looking at that.
Okay. Excellent. Norm or Dawn, you want to add to that? Dawn, I think you did. Norm, you want to add to that?
I do. I want to go, I want to go back to first that, the other question about what if employees are afraid, that actually came up in my office this morning. We, and because we're limiting, we're not bringing in, starting next week, our whole staff. And I'm talking specifically custodial right now. We are breaking them up into pods, and we're not bringing all of them back. We're going to shift, so next week will be a group of custodians, the week after probably be a different group. And we had someone this morning who just said they were just afraid, they didn't want to, didn't want to come in. We have the capability of having some people do that, right? I mean, we're all thinking about, and Don's got a 40% number is using of, you know, what our staff will get down to at some point, for whatever reason it might be. We're We're going to accommodate everybody we can for as long as we can, until we can't. And then we're going to have to start imposing some rules. But right now, you know, I've got a, it happened to be a 70-year-old person who still works here and was really concerned about coming in. And frankly, our supervisors and other custodians had no problem with this person doing that. So again, that's communication, as we've all talked about. We got out there and talked to everybody about it, "What do you think?" And it was round, you know, "We want to come in, that's fine if she doesn't want to come in." So that's one thing I wanted to talk about. The keeping the distancing piece is more along the lines of what Dawn said. I'm finding that my staff isn't really caring too much about that. And we have to impose things on them. So for instance, when the custodian group comes in, they've got to meet and pick up their keys or access cards or assignments or whatever it is. We're doing that in remote locations and we're keeping them spread. I know I just saw two of our grounds guys in a bobcat this morning together, close to each other, riding together. We got to stop that, right? So that's going to be the harder part, is developing that protocol with our staff. But as we get into limited staff next week, I think that's going to work itself out.
But I like that developing a protocol for staff so that you've got guidelines specifically for what they're doing because the habits are hard to break, right?
Exactly right.
For people and they're doing the best they can. And they don't, in many cases, they really don't realize. And so putting those protocols in place and also, Norm, you said this earlier, Mary, you reiterated it, communication, 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 in that it's consistent with the facts that you have so that people are not out there making up their own facts. And that's not going to be helpful because it's way more difficult to bust those myths once they get, they go viral. So that's really excellent. Okay, I'm going to go to some place-based stuff and some building questions. And one of these has to do with where are you, you know, is leadership dealing with which spaces are going to remain occupied or not? Or how are those decisions being made in terms of buildings and spaces and their occupation and that kind of thing? Then I'll go to some specifics around this, depending on how we respond to that.
So Lander, I'll jump in. Norm, we, at our situation management team level, so the overall command and control level, we have decided what services need to be open and where we're going to close buildings. And we spend a lot of time every day talking about this. So with the strength of that group, which has most of the cabinet members on it, we're able to dictate some things. There are one-offs or even two-offs of faculty that need to come in for whatever reason, staff that might have to, there may be an ongoing lab project. I mean, I'm not a research institution, the other two I think are, but you can have a lot of those on various campuses. We've actually developed a form that if you need to come on campus, you literally have to petition to do so. I know we do that a lot in our residence halls, but we're also doing that with faculty and staff. And that goes to the head of our situation management team, who then reviews it, calls it out, and then brings it to us as a group and says, "What do you think? This is going to be a slow process, not everybody's going to love it, but this is how we're controlling that access point." I'm sure everybody's going to have those issues and we decided we had to go that far with it. We're a mid-sized school, so we can do that. We don't have 10,000 employees, but we've got a lot. So this is a big job, but it's the only way we think we can keep control of what's going on in the buildings.
That's excellent. And Dawn, I think you mentioned earlier the importance of getting into discipline tracking, using card access data to know who's coming in, where they're going. It's almost back to this contact tracing. China does that really well, maybe too well. However, so that you're mapping movement, that's one. So how are you dealing that with respect to your spaces and what you're planning to, what you're closing and not allowing people in and that kind of thing? Can you help some of our folks?
Well, first, yeah, first of all, we can't, it'd be impossible for us to control because we're so distributed in what we do here and we're a major research university. So just starting with the research, the research is where it's at. What we're trying to do, again, is understand the movement to and from that research from the parking lot. And if we have researchers coming in, three different building entrances and going to one common area, as an example, we're going to limit that one access, that one set of restrooms, that one path of travel for those three labs that are in that wing, things like that. Our library is now in a by appointment mode and we're going to, when things settle down and we are able to get into sort of a pattern of occupancy, then we'll, again, map path of travel, close off other parts of the building. So we're not as well positioned to shut and close and darken an entire building as much as we are major portions of a building. And that's where we're going to focus on. This faculty online move that we have going on on all of our campuses is, we have to open the access for our faculty to get in. They prefer to develop and present their courses in the classroom itself. And if we find that one faculty member is using one classroom in a single building, we'll move them to a cluster of classrooms. But so we don't have the data yet. That's the next frontier for us to work on next week as we finally are now a campus that is down to what should be next week, 5% occupancy. We can start narrowing in and understanding where people need to go and how they're getting there.
Okay, that's really helpful. Mary, can you talk about, it's an angle to this, and it's about campus closures and going remote and online, either all or in part. And it's, how are you handling research and faculty? And then, of course, you've got medical as well and the feeling that they should have total access. I think you've got some good comments about that.
Our vice president for research has sent out a memo to all of the researchers on campus to present guidelines for how they can do their research, how they can continue to do their research, and at what level they may be able to do so. So, you know, and the same with faculty. You know, those are kind of tough pills to swallow right now that, you know, part of the whole thing of changing our habits. But we're having some success with that. We have supposed to be due at noon today, the work plans for everybody on campus, you know, those divisions and the areas of the campus where they're going to be doing that work. So just like Dawn said, if, you know, we see one classroom being used in a building for a faculty person recording their lectures or something like that, we're going to encourage them to move to another facility and try to consolidate some of those efforts going forward. So that's part of the efforts that are happening here. But that's a really heavy lift for us also, you know, when you look at the number of people that, you know, we're small cities, right? So how do we manage that and allow folks to continue their work? Because one of the things that's really important as we're all migrating towards these online classes is also, in my opinion, the quality of those classes, you know? So we want our students back. We don't want them dropping off after this semester, right? So we've got to try to support these efforts that are going on to deliver this online learning, but at the same time, we've got to protect the environment here also. And it's tough, you know, for all of you on the call here today. There's no one thing that's going to fit for everybody on your campuses, but it's a big challenge. I know it is and it's.
Here, though, you've got your top leadership to issue a set of guidelines. So you're working as a community so that it isn't, you're getting the senior leadership to go there. So I want to go to, someone had asked who is staying on campus, and I believe Norm already answered that, it was some facility staff. Public safety and IT was what I've heard. So let's, we've addressed that. However, I want to go to residence halls and what we're doing there in terms of other consolidating residence halls. And there's a reason behind that. It's because we need to handle students that can't leave. So I think, Norm, can you start with that one on handling the students that can't leave because you've got students that are international, I can't go. You have other students that just otherwise cannot leave. And I want you to look at food, health, janitorial, living spaces and what you're doing in that regard.
Yep, so we've been struggling with this all week long. Our ResLife folks are trying to get a handle on who is here, why they're here. They've been trying to help people get home to the best that they could do. You know, one of the things that hamstrings us a bit is that we haven't decided to close or to cancel in face-to-face classes going forward. So we may still, according to what our plan is right now, we may still open up this semester. So we've got, unfortunately, the kids are spread out in their permanent assignments. We have not brought them together in any one area. We do have some vacancies, but we're holding those as potential quarantine spaces in case we get an illness that breaks out. And we've got a protocol on how we're setting those up. We've actually got a quarantine package that we're putting in each of those spaces that will include cleaning equipment and health services is provided, some things that they may need. But we are taking that building by building. So some of the buildings are apartment-style living that is individual, that the students generally take care of themselves, which custodians do not go into. So that's usually upperclassman housing. That will be dealt with by providing cleaning services to students who are going to be living there. Other areas, especially in the first-year student spaces, they tend to be more of a custodial serviced area. We're going to continue to service it as we normally would. If an illness breaks out, we're going to go into a whole other protocol on how we deal with that. That's a whole long discussion that I think is still being developed now. But yeah, we are not bringing them into, and I know some schools are, they're trying to consolidate, that just didn't work for us.
Okay, good. Other folks, did you want to, Mary or Dawn, did you want to chime in on that?
Well, we're, you know, with the decision not to have our students return to campus, we are beginning today for the next nine days, having them move out. And then we're going to be designated, we have designated one residence hall for the 200 or so students that do not have a place to go. We're also preparing one of our residence halls to be for overnight accommodation of our healthcare employees as an option for them not to go home. They may not want to go home if a family member is infected and so on and so forth. So we've established a second one to do that. And then the third one is preparing an isolation residence hall if needed for whatever. So yeah, our residence hall system's closing down. Students are moving out on a very controlled and scheduled and social distance or physical distancing protocol so that we don't have all our students competing for the same elevator and the same floor to get their belongings out.
Got it. Okay.
Lander, we're pretty much doing the same thing here at Kentucky as what Dawn was saying.
Okay, excellent. So I want to look at an aspect of partnering with our business partners. Question was whether we're partnering with trusted HVAC contractors as backup should staff become ill. Do we have some protocols in place for this kind of backup expertise? Do our folks, in thinking about that, it's a pretty good question in terms of what we're doing to have backup skill sets.
This is Norm. I can start if you'd like. We've, most people have, I would think, business continuity plans, you know, it could be major snowstorms, could be anything that happens. We've developed those and for each of our trade areas, you know, we figured out what are our limitations, where are our risks? And we've got, in virtually every case, we've got two or three backup contractors that can help us if this happens. And this is the same, not just HVAC, we've got this for all the trade areas. Yeah, if you haven't done it, you need to because you don't know. And we've also found that we need to stay in constant contact with those contractors to make sure that their protocols for working haven't changed, that they're still willing to come on site for us. You know, what are they practicing for safety, those kind of things? But absolutely, we're thinking about it. We've got it lined up, we've put it on paper, we've distributed it so people know that we've got this plan in place because it could come to that.
That's excellent response. Others?
I would just say, once again, communication and the value of our relationships with our business partners is vital to our success, not only in a crisis like this, but just in our day-to-day operations also.
Great point. Let me say that we've got a number of business partners that are coming to us and they are willing to give resources, populate our COVID-19 website to do programming for us, et cetera. So we'll be asking the community, and we certainly ask you on this call, to let us know, give us your feedback on areas that you think you either need training or you need more information, et cetera. Water supplies, water sanitation, the HVAC was another one, I mean, anything you're doing with respect to flooring, all of these kinds of things are really, really important. And our business partners are there, that's why we call them business partners. They're there to help us. Dawn, were you going to add?
No, I was just going to add that in this modeling of the 40% staff reduction, that'll reveal our pinch points and our vulnerabilities. And maybe 40% is not going to be good enough. It was interesting what California is projecting, I think over half their population they're planning for. So if you are not planning for a major staff reduction, then my advice is you should be because that's what, that's the curve that we're on in terms of this growing crisis.
Okay, good. Because that then, that bears on a question that was asked about, are we beginning discussions on the financial impact of crisis and this crisis and reaction to it? You know, they said furloughs, layoffs, operating capital budgets. We weren't going to go there today, but the question, you know, that statement was, can we share any parameters that we are modeling? And you just said that, Dawn, is perfect. It was like you were reading my mind and you hadn't even seen that question. So yeah, that's really where you need to be going and thinking in that regard. Can I ask about the supply chain? Because we just have another, let's say another minute about the supply chain. Some people say that they're out of disinfectant chemicals, they start being told five to six weeks before restock and larger impacts on supply chain. Any of the three of you want to dive in on that before we close?
Well, let me speak to them in this logistics group that's in that structure. Our tendency would be to try to find this, our critical materials ourselves, that's the day-to-day mode we're in. But actually, we'd be best served by trying to go through the institutional channels because I am seeing channels opened up in a variety of ways that we never would have thought were opened up because it's being done at an institutional level with a team completely focused on it. So that's just one bit of advice. Yeah, if you can't get it under your normal channel, by all means, take advantage of whatever the institution has set up for critical supply chain issues.
That's excellent. Any others want to dive onto that before I bring us to a close?
I would say at our place, because of our healthcare enterprise, we're very sensitive to that issue and, you know, that will be our priority is for those supplies to be directed there if needed be.
Okay, great. So I certainly apologize if I could not get to everyone's questions. However, Appa has committed to be a resource for your questions. Billy, let's go to that resource slide so that we can see what Appa has to offer. Yeah, let's go, there's another slide that has the list. There it is, okay. So the resources on COVID-19 and beyond, you can see, we have a website link on COVID. We have an online community. You log into your MyAppa account. And what we are suggesting that if you're having any issues accessing this community and you had saved your previous versions because we updated links and did upgrades to the menuing based on your feedback, you want to remove the bookmark from your browser, you want to clear your cookies and cache in the settings and then not, don't not use the save password, re-enter your password and go in that way because we think that will help you because of the upgrades that we did. There's a direct email I mentioned earlier, it's called communications@appa.org. It's brand new, it's a one-way direct in to Appa. You can send us questions, you can send us your, any resources you want to share. You can send us questions. You can send us your, any resources you want to share, any of that. And we will commit to sourcing it, coming back at you, trying to help this community through that one-way direct, so that if that's easier for you, let's just go for it. We have a Twitter account, @appa underscore facilities. We're operating now on a hashtag, hashtag @appatownhall, and hashtag a response to COVID-19. So we're using those. Facebook is pretty populated through Appa Leadership and Educational Facilities. I did mention this construction owner survey that is out just for construction owners. And it's our intent to get a snapshot of how owners are handling construction during this challenge. We are looking for input from all construction owners in collaboration with other organizations as our strategic partners, COA Construction Owners Association of America, NASPA State Facilities, AGC, the General Contractors, and probably even SAME Society of American Military Engineers, so that we can get our hands around it. It's open for one week. And recognize that Pennsylvania and probably California, who are under a complete shelter in place or closure, that they, it is a whole new nightmare when it comes to your construction, because I saw that in your questions. NFPA, we also offer under Appa standards and codes, the NFPA-related regulations and such. Those have all been updated and are available to you at the looksee. So these are the resources. We will get back to you on your questions. What I wanted to recount as we close this out is to tell you, last night, I saw a most touching thing in Spain. At 8:00 PM every night, they applaud the essential people that are doing, or they call it viva los médicos. I thought that was amazing. And so you, educational facilities professionals, are the frontline. So I say viva los profesionales de instalaciones, which is facilities professionals in Spanish, all right? A little levity didn't hurt anybody, and finding is, let me tell you. So I'm going to, I'm going to close it out with a few statements, and that is, in the race between fear, where fear only lasts so long, and hope, where hope never dies, hope is making itself felt everywhere, every way. I heard that in everyone's comments today, and I'm seeing it in your questions and comments. So we will get by, we will survive, and we will do so by connecting with each other, collecting and sharing our resources with one another. Go for it. You can do this. Plan in days, not weeks. We thank you so much for joining us, and we will now officially close out the webinar today.